This is all the other municipal town council meeting for July of 2015. Welcome all of you that are attending tonight. I'm Mayor Dan Pugh. It's my pleasure to serve in this capacity to this town. If you, as you came in, you may have seen there were some agendas of tonight's meeting on the table there at the rear of the chamber, and please feel free to pick one of those up if you didn't do so on the way in. The next item on our agenda will be to call the role. We do that by introducing each member of our council and those members of our staff that are present tonight. To my immediate right is our Mayor Pro Tem Sandra Maugh, followed by Councilman Ed Smith, followed by Councilman Jeff Singer. And to my left is Councilman Robert Green, Councilman Mike Horn, and Councilman Dr. Ken Satter. We have members of our staff that are with us tonight, led by our town manager Hank Perkins, our town attorney Beau Half, our town clerk Ms. Joyce Walker, our town finance director and assistant town manager Kathy Bruce. And in the rear of the chamber is our public works director George Hauser and our planner Marty Myers. Then we have Lynn Hall who is on the camera for tonight's meeting. Then we have Elizabeth Cruz is with us from the news media. Thank you, Elizabeth, for being here tonight. I think that includes all of the introductions. Next will be the adoption of the agenda for tonight's meeting. I think there has been a couple of additions from what was actually discussed at our briefing session. Ms. Walker, you want to lead us through that?
Yes, sir. You will have a couple of items highlighted at your position. The first one is ordinance 2015001, and that's basically a record-type order, the same as you did in updating the UDO loose leaf binder. This is for our town code book. This came in yesterday evening, or today, I'm sorry, and I thought it's easier so we can get it out. And the other two are budget amendments that I think our town manager will go into more detail when you get to it.
I do have one addition to add, and that would be a short closed session at the end of our meeting to discuss acquisition of property. And we'll take that, put it in as nine, I guess it would be nine C, and then move adjournment down to nine D. Counsel, do you have any questions on the tonight's agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the like sign. Okay. We do have an agenda to follow, and our manager will be leading us through it. I failed to mention that Ms. Hall is recording tonight's session. It'll be for playback on cable channel six, and we welcome those in that audience who may be viewing by that method and joining us that way. So we'll start with the consent agenda. Your manager.
Okay. Tonight's consent agenda consists of five items. First is resolution 2015045 for the acceptance and approval of monthly financials for May 2015. The second is the approval of council briefing and action minutes from June 4, 2015. The approval of council meeting minutes from June 11, 2015. Fourth is the approval of council special meeting minutes from June 25, 2015. And lastly, ordinance 2015001, updating the town code book of ordinances loose leaf binder.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any questions of the manager on any of the items that are included within the consent agenda? I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Motion.
Mr. Singer, do we have a second? Counselman Smith, second. No further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the like sign. Okay. Consent agenda passes, and next item, please.
Next item is introductions, presentations, and proclamations. We do have a presentation this evening. I believe the mayor and finance officer Kathy Bruce will be handling this.
Okay.
Each year, upon completion of the town's financial audit, the finance department utilizes the information gathered in the audit, along with other statistical data, to prepare a report for a certificate of achievement in financial reporting. This is formatted by the Governmental Association of Financial Officers. And with that said, I would like to read the following press release. The certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting has been awarded to the town of Lewisville by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada for its comprehensive annual financial report. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. An award of financial reporting achievement has been awarded to me (laughter) by the government as primarily responsible for preparing the award. The CAFRA has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, including demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the CAFRA. The GFOA is a nonprofit professional association serving approximately 17,500 government finance professionals with offices in Chicago, Illinois, and Washington, DC. I'm very proud to present this award to the council again this year. This is our 11th year in receiving the CAFRA award. They used to give individual plaques each year, and now they have prepared one very nice plaque when you get little buttons on that. So, and mayor, here is the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting presented to the town of Lewisville for its comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2014.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, ma'am.[496.52][496.52](applause)
Actually, on behalf of council and myself, we thank Kathy and her assistant Sharon Church for all the hard work and effort that's going forward. You are most deserving of this. It's nothing that we as a council have done. You've kept us straight all these number of years. We appreciate that very much. Your hard work, your efforts, your due diligence has been outstanding, and I think I can speak for all members of council that we rest easier and sleep better each night, knowing that our finances and our procedures and the process that we go through is A1. So Kathy, thank you again.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your hard work.
I appreciate that so much. I'd like to also thank Ms. Lynn Hall. She assists us every year in our formatting as well.
Very good.
Thank you.[557.16][557.16](pause)
Next item on our agenda is the first opportunity for the public to address council. This is, we'll have a public forum where the public may have registered. I don't see anyone that has signed up, but it's an opportunity for anyone in the audience that would like to come forward and address council on any issue. And the rules are that we listen, we appreciate any input and all input from our citizens. We don't get into debate or discussion concerning the item or the issue that may be brought forward, but we will take it into consideration, and if warrant, we will then take it up in later sessions. So is there anyone in the audience at this time that would like to address council? Okay, with that, we do have forums at the rear of the chambers that you can submit written address to the council, comments, so if you'd like to choose that method. If no one's coming forward, we will close the public forum and go to item number five, which is new business.
Okay. Item number five, new business A, has a resolution 2015028, adopting the Northern Foodmont Hazard Mitigation Plan. I'm going to let town clerk Joyce Walker, do you have any comments regarding this for the council?
No, this is just a reminder that this plan is now consolidating seven counties, whereas the original plan that was put in place five years ago was only for Forsyth County. So this is to officially put those counties together for, you know, for hazard mitigation and emergency services.
Anyone, or any questions from council, comments or discussion concerning the resolution? All right, we'll entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay. Do we have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the like sign. Okay, that resolution passes. Next item.
Okay. The next item is ordinance 2015059. This is a budget ordinance, amending budget ordinance 2015045 in an amount of $39,500 for community-wide sewer master planning and feasibility study for providing sanitary sewer services to the town of Lewisville. This contracting work was discussed last week at our briefing. This for everyone in attendance is a study that is being done jointly between the town of Lewisville and Forsyth County, Winston-Salem Forsyth County Planning or Utilities. And this is, for the main part, is going to study the feasibility and overall method to provide sewer to all currently unsewered communities and residents within the town of Lewisville. The city-county utilities is splitting the cost of this with the town 50-50. The budget ordinance that you have, the budget amendment, is to appropriate the $39,000 from appropriated fund balance and put it into the Public Works Department for expenditure.
Okay. Motion to approve ordinance 2015059.
Excellent.
Any further discussion or comment? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the ordinance passes for that item.
Okay. The next item is resolution 2015047. This is awarding the attached contract, and we have a paper copy at station as well, to Municipal Services Engineering for the sanitary service feasibility study, and it also has an attached proposal within the drop box as well. You have the paper copy in front of you because we had a slight amendment to the contract, but that's what you have in front, but it was just one word added to it.
At our briefing, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, do you need a motion before we have discussion?
Yes, please. Following protocol.
Motion approved.
Second. Do we have a second? Now for discussion.
In our briefing, I'm seeing a call some conversation we have under 2.2 about our kickoff meeting, and we wanted to be a little more specific than with just a meeting with the town. I think we wanted to be sure that we were specific if it is town staff, but we also wanted to include utilities commission, utilities committee members in the invitation to be part of that meeting. So I want to be sure that that's either reflected somehow in this.
That will happen.
Good, great.
There were a couple of other things that were mentioned in the briefing as well. One was to add business to Vianna Business District. That has been done within the contract. The other material that was mentioned is to at least address how package treatment plants fit into the grand scheme of things for Lewisville.
Perfect.
That has been addressed, and it will be the subject of further discussion at the kickoff meeting.
Excellent.
Okay.
Any further discussion or comments, counsel?
I have a question. If for any reason, I'm looking at 6.3, and the contract needs to be extended, is there an additional cost if it needs to be extended for the 30 days out?
No.
Thank you.
Just the time provision.
Exactly.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we do have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes.
Next is ordinance 2015060, amending budget ordinance 2015045 in an amount of $8,450 to contract for the removal of trees in the lakes in the Willa Run Municipal Service District. We're probably doing this a little bit for procedure, a little different than we've What we've got is a proposal utilizing a tree service that is going to use a crane, and the town, working with the MSD, which is a part of our old governance structure, has been working for a good number of years in an effort to get trees out of the lakes in the Willa Run community. We have been hampered by, quite frankly, a resistance to work with us from some of the residents that have trees on the back sides of the properties. The contract or the proposal that we have with the tree service, with crane service, is going to utilize a crane that will sit upon the roads, and they will get into the lakes in boats, be able to saw the trees off from the water's edge, and then use the crane to winch the trees to the streets, where the crane will then haul the trees out, and they will load the trees and take them away. That's essentially what we've got, and this is going to probably cover, George, this is all of the trees that are visible from the road, as we discussed. Yes, okay.
And what the manager, I think, referred to a little bit of a change of protocol.
Ordinarily, we would get before the Municipal Service District Board, and they would hear this and hear the proposal, make the recommendation to go forward with the work, and then we would take the budget ordinance amendment to the town council to make the monies available to do the work. In an interest to save some time, the MSD does meet on the 21st. I thought it was next week, but it's actually a couple of weeks in from now. They will listen to and accept the proposal if it's something that they wish to embark on. If this proposal and this contract work is within something that the MSD wants to do, then we will have already covered the financial end of it to make this work happen as soon as possible, as opposed to having them approve the concept of the work going on, then having to come back in the August meeting for approval of the budget amendment.
Motion to approve, second. Any discussion or comments?
You mentioned that this covers, I believe, all the trees we can see from the roads.
Yes.
Does that, does that meet all the complaints, I'll put it that way, that we've heard from that board?
It's pretty much all the trees. All of the complaints, all of the complaints that we receive on those trees are ones that people can see from the roads as they travel across the dams.
How many trees are we talking about, you know?
George?
It's nine trees that are all invented, and there's one that's dead that's not all that is included in it.
Yep.
That's a bargain.
Anything else, Ed?
No.
Anyone else have comments or questions? We do have a motion and a second for ordinance 2015060. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that ordinance passes.
Okay.
And trust that the MSD board will go along with it.
I have had a conversation with their chairman this morning, and he understands this, and I guess the long and the short of it is, even though we've approved the ordinance ahead of their recommendation, if for whatever reason the MSD board was to meet, and they don't choose to see to carry forward with this work, if the work is not carried out, the money's not spent. So doing the budget ordinance doesn't do anything but pave the way timewise for the work to happen in a more expedient manner.
Thank you. Okay. Next item.
Okay. Next item is ordinance 2015061, amending budget ordinance 2015045 in an amount of $10,620 in order to purchase three light poles and to install two poles on Jennings Road. This was covered in the briefing last week as a point of information. We have two poles that needed to be, have on Jennings, which is the road between Lewisville-Vienna and the Lowes Food Shopping Center that are down. They need to be replaced. Ordinarily, these poles have a very long lead time for, from the time that you order them to the time that you get them in, because they're a specialty pole for it. The third pole that we have in here for the budget ordinance amendment is in order to have one in stock, so that in the future, if one of these poles is hit, we can move forward quickly to get the pole in place without having to wait so long for the lead time and the replacement to get here.
Do we have poles that are along Shallowford Road? Do we have those extra or?
We currently have one in reserve for the poles that go up on Shallowford Road.
Good. All right. Counsel, it's a pleasure with ordinance 2015061.
Make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Who's going to install this?
This would be LEI.
Okay. Because I know that the gentleman whose daughter was involved in one of those got a price from Johnson's Modern Electrical to install, and it was significantly less, so I don't know if we've got a contract with LEI or whatever, but it was significantly less.
Okay.
FYI.
All right.
Other question is, as we talked the other night about getting the lampposts for the bridge, we're going to put lampposts on each side of the bridge. Do we need to just riddle those with this rather than?
No, we don't have those. Those are different lights. We're going to make sure that the foundations are going to be done. I think George Hauser and I discussed the idea that he is dealing with the DOT to make sure that the conduit is laid in, not only through the bridge itself, but we work on conduit that will cross underneath the road bed before the road surface goes in when they get the bridge replaced. So that the conduit will be in place for the extension of the electrical.
Is there any reason why we want to follow this kind of thing? Is there any reason why, when we know we're going to put light poles there, right, and I think we're, we're all, we're agreed on the bridge?
Yeah, we know we're going to do that.
Is there any reason why we wouldn't go ahead and order them and have them ready to go so that wasn't, they could be installed at the time that we open the bridge?
Well, I'm not sure. George, how, what's the lead time on the order for the poles?
They're not as long as the one in Jennings, but he's working on that pole as well.
Okay.
Great. So we're moving to try to have those in place when we dedicate the bridge?
That'd be great.
When we talked about these poles on Jennings, we also, my recollection is that there was some discussion about moving the base away from the original.
Yeah, we had, we had one pole itself that we're replacing that has been struck multiple times in its old location. We moved the pole base location and removed that from its old location where it kept getting hit into a new location on the other side of the ditch.
So are there any other poles that are susceptible to being hit as a result of their location or?
I'm sure we do. We've, George, you got any more that get, you're getting hit?
(laughter)
Yeah, the one that we're talking about moving is in a curve, so that you've got a curve, it doglegs to the left, and cars for some reason have a problem making that left angle to the curve, so it'll keep hitting this one especially.
So now there are two being replaced now, or one?
Yes, there's two.
Okay.
We have some reimbursement on one of them, right?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? All right, we do have a motion and a second for approving ordinance 2015061. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that ordinance passes, and we'll go to the next subject.
All right. The next item is public hearings, and we have none for this evening. It brings us to administrative reports for events coming up at Shallowford Square. The 18th coming up, we will have, I guess it's our third annual cornhole tournament. That'll be in the afternoon, and the Starlight Movie Night will be that evening. I think it's Paddington, if I'm not misuring. Yeah, that's it. Moving on to August 1st, we will have a concert event at the park, and then on August 14th, another movie night. And then that will be it until September, when we will have the second play performance of the season.
You mentioned that the cornhole tournament is in the afternoon?
Yes, sir. Oh, is it morning? Okay, morning.
I think maybe it's appropriate at this point in our agenda to give some recognition and gratitude and appreciation to our staff for, I think since our last meeting, we finished up the play Little Women, and then we had, next was the first of hopefully many to follow, street parties, and then, of course, this past week was our 4th of July celebration. And all three of these events, in my opinion, went off like clockwork. It was extremely well done. We've gotten just gratitude and appreciation, one after the other, from our citizens and actually people that were not residents but came to all three of those events. So special kudos tonight to Lynn Hall and members of our Parks and Recreation and following also members of our staff that have participated and made these events possible. It doesn't come about by accident. There's a lot of hard work and effort that goes into each of these events. And basically, Lewisville is known across this region and basically throughout the state for the events that we hold here in town and specifically in Shallowford Square. So Lynn, thank you, and all other staff members that made those events possible. We appreciate all the hard work and the many hours that went into them from erecting the stages, the stages, and then all of the flow of transportation and everything else that took place. It's well done. Any other members of council like to add to that?
Just to echo your words, Hank, I mean, I think Hank and the staff just did a terrific job. I think Corporal Davenport did an amazing job getting his traffic flow plan put into place.
Yes, he did.
It really, I've had a number of calls from people who said it was just a terrific event, and, you know, when you're out in the afternoon, and you see Kathy and Marty and George and Ryan and Hank and Lynn and the whole gang in their shirts, and it's 92 degrees, and they're moving things around and getting it all set up, I don't think oftentimes we express the appreciation that we do express for what those guys do on their, theoretically, a day off for the rest of us, but it's a workday for them, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. So we'll go to the next item.
The next items are items that were handled at our briefing and action minute, action meeting last meeting last week. We had, the first was a series of ordinances for the transfer of funds from capital reserve greenways to capital reserves sidewalks, bike paths, greenways per the new budget. The first was ordinance 2015-058, amending capital reserve ordinance sidewalks, bike paths to receive all monies from the greenways capital reserve fund, and to rename this capital reserve fund to sidewalk bike paths greenways capital reserve fund. The next was ordinance 2015-057, amending capital reserve ordinance greenways by transferring all funds in an amount of $100,127.24 into the sidewalk bike paths greenways capital reserve fund. And lastly, we had ordinance 2015-055, amending budget ordinance 2015-045 to reflect the closing of the greenways capital reserve fund and movement of monies in the sidewalk bike paths greenways capital reserve fund. The next were an ordinance in a resolution dealing with regional stormwater plan update, extension of contract completion. First was ordinance 2015-056, amending budget ordinance 2015-045 in an amount of $11,481 to extend the completion date of the contract with Stan Tech Consulting Services Incorporated. The amendment will allow payment of the balance in the new fiscal year when the contract is complete. Now, for those in attendance, the entire contract amount had been spoken for financially within the last fiscal year. Our fiscal year ends June 30. The contract and the work, while it was proposed to finish and be completed before the end of the fiscal year, ran into delays, causing it to go into August before it's going to be completed. So for financial reasons, we had paid out a certain amount of money in the old fiscal year. Once the end of the fiscal year happened on June 30, we had a remaining balance of $11,000 and some dollars left that would happen after the fiscal year began. So we are really moving the monies that was left unspent in the last fiscal year to the new fiscal year, is an accounting requirement. The next was resolution 2015-046, and this was the approval of the council extension that I, the, I'm sorry, the contract extension that I just discussed through change order number one. Okay? And then that brings us to For the Good of the Order.
All right. This is the second opportunity for anyone in attendance tonight to address council concerning any issue. May have been something on tonight's agenda, or it may be something that's just very important to the individual. So if there's anyone at this time, it's the same rules as before. I ask that you come forward to the podium, that you're speaking to the microphone, state your name and your address, and limit your comments to three minutes, if you would, please. Is there anyone that'd like to address council at this time? All right, and as before, there are forms available for written comments at the rear. So we'll close the public comments section of the tonight's meeting and go to council comments. Council members, anything from you? Excuse me.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to follow up on the Fourth of July. In years past, it sort of, when they started, it would go one or two, and then it'd be a little lull. But this year, when it started, it stayed, and I thought that was probably one of the best that we've ever had. I mean, it was continuous up until the end, and it was a very good show, I thought. A lot of people were really happy with that. So, good job, Lynn, your staff.
Thank you. Anything else from council? Well, we do have, we added to our agenda a short or a closed session at this point in time, and it is to discuss the potential acquisition of property. So, Mr. Attorney, would you do us the honors of?
Yes, your honor. This will be pursuant to North Carolina General Statute Section 143-318.11A5, to establish or to instruct the public body's staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the public body in negotiating, one, the price and other material terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property by purchase, option, exchange, or lease; or, two, the amount of compensation or other material terms of an employment contract. Of course, that one doesn't apply here this evening.
Okay. I so move, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Zinger. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? At this point in time, we will go into closed session. Coming out of closed session, there will be no action to be taken involving the reason for going into closed session. So we thank you for being with us tonight. If you want to stay until we come back out of closed session, we will go back into open session. Appreciate the Boy Scouts being with us tonight, and if you need signatures for confirmation of your attendance, we'll provide that at this time.